The Finance Committee meeting Thursday, September ninth, 2021. First on the media agenda is ordinance 2153. How about?
Twenty-one fifty-three. These are ordinances the mayor had mentioned to you at the last council meeting for IBI doing professional services, engineering services. Ordinance twenty-one fifty-three is for producing engineering plans for the third street and fifth street loop, waterline, and street improvement project. I would suggest that this be taken out of the capital infrastructure fund. There will be no budget amendment necessary.
Cent water line replacement, do you know what that is?
Yes, that's for the engineering for that.
Yeah. Okay. Nate?
Just a comment. I typically would like to see enterprise funds pick up the enterprise cost with this, but I feel like, well, these are extraordinary projects, both twenty-one fifty-three and twenty-one fifty-four. I think having that applied out of the capital infrastructure fund is, I think it's a good idea. And also get the ball rolling with the pavement project, get in line with the grant opportunities, just because of the design part, grant opportunities for that. And, you know, they're going to try to get it paid, have to have it paid by the end of next year. So we have to have something rolling with it. And I'd like to make a motion to give twenty-one fifty-three favorable recommendation.
All right. Thank you. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance twenty-one fifty-three is favorably recommended by Finance. Ordinance twenty-one fifty-four, John?
Also, at the last meeting, the mayor had discussed this as the second project that would need engineering associated with it. This is for the Pine Street and First Street improvement projects. Once again, this is IBI. Would be taken out of the capital infrastructure project fund. No budget amendment necessary.
Nate?
I'm sorry. Can you just tell us your water lines?
I think that that is road improvements, road and drainage, I believe.
Yeah, that was a regrading, how that?
Yeah, that's a part of, we've got a match with ARC group that have that taken over to Pine and that across the tracks for industrial development.
Good.
And I'd also like to give twenty-one fifty-four favorable recommendation.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-one fifty-four is favorably recommended by Finance. Resolution twenty-one fifty-five, John?
Twenty-one fifty-five is the alternative tax budget. This is required by the county. It's due actually in October, but we like to get a jump on this type of stuff and go ahead and get it submitted so we can get that behind us. These numbers that are projected for the alternative tax budget will also be numbers that will be used as our beginning for two thousand twenty-two. There may be a few minor amendments on this as the year progresses, we get closer to the end of the two thousand twenty-one, certainly in the fourth quarter of two thousand twenty-one. I don't really think you're going to see this change a whole lot. Once again, alternative tax budget required by Lawrence County auditors.
And every year someone asks, but we can say someone is intimidated to ask, and then every year someone says, this is only revenue, that's all that's required.
Well, there are revenues and expenses on here.
And it's an estimate based off the first nine months, right? Not?
It's a, we made this estimate based off the first eight months. We'd had a closing of August. If we'd waited till the ninth month to do an estimate on here, I don't know that we could have gotten the number, the September closed and this form filled out and our September budget in a day or two.
And you have to have this into the auditors by?
October eighth.
October eighth.
So we will be early with it and they will appreciate that.
Which means we have to have two-thirds to get that right?
Yes.
Okay. We do have six here tonight. I don't know if Chris is making one or not. Bob?
Second. Make the third.
Sure.
Now, second, third, four recommendations.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-one fifty-five is favorably recommended by Finance. Miscellaneous?
Yes, I do have something favorable to report, and that is that we had our two thousand twenty audit closing on Tuesday, September second. And once again, we had a clean audit. It was an unmodified opinion. We had one citation that was for not following GAAP and one recommendation that was for outstanding checks that were old in our payroll register. So we have come a long way. I've got a she here that reflects it back since two thousand thirteen that the auditors were kind enough to prepare that. So it's independent of me trying to say anything. We had a very, very good audit and I'm proud of the Finance Department staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, one question. After we spend one hundred and eighty-two thousand for the IBI two projects, the capital infrastructure fund, how much will we have left of that fund?
Um, there's two hundred and eighty-five thousand in there now, so.
Two hundred and five thousand?
Yeah.
Something like that, okay. John, that finding we get every year on the GAAP because we use, we use one formula, we use.
GAAP is, it's cash and that is something that had been presented to council a few years ago. It is a substantial cost savings. And four years ago, I guess, when we chose to go to the cash basis, we couldn't have afforded a GAAP audit. So it's worked out good for us. They still, they still audit the fire out of you. I'll tell you, they look at, turn over every stone that they can possibly turn over and pretty proud of what we're able to do.
Thank you. Nate?
I'd just like to acknowledge John and the Finance staff, you know, again, four years in a row, definitely not something to do. I think that speaks wonders, so thank you very much for your hard work. Please pass that along to your staff.
Thank you.
Chairman Harvey, I just add that, that tax audit meeting and the auditors were nearly giddy with the results and how well things were prepared for them. They were very happy with our city.
Thanks, Mike. I try to stay away from auditors. Anybody else? Nate?
Motion to adjourn.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finance committee is adjourned. Six minutes, I think. Called by the Ironton City Council meeting September ninth, twenty twenty-one. With us this evening, we have Father Benjamin from St. Joe, St. Lawrence, and St. Mary's to give our invocation. If you could please stand and he will give our invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, all of you. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Lord God, we give you thanks for the opportunities and the privileges we enjoy in this great country of ours, a nation to pursue life, liberty, and happiness. We pray for others who do not have the privileges that we have. We pray for those at this time who serve our country, especially in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and especially those who have died recently in Afghanistan. We pray for those people in their turbulent times. We pray for our local needs, those who help us, lead us, and guide us for the difficult tasks placed before them, our mayor and our city council. We ask as we deliberate and negotiate that you will be present, that you will show us the way to serve all people as best we can. We ask your guidance and that everything will begin with your blessing, continue under your grace, and come to completion with your blessing. We ask all things through Christ our Lord. Amen. I bless you all in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Father.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Born in the unborn.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Bob.
Here.
Pine.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Next in our agenda, we have the approval of the regular council meeting minutes of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and the Finance Committee meeting minutes of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Any errors, omissions, addition to those minutes? Here, none of these meeting minutes will stand as approved. Next, we have audience participation. If you're with us this evening and you'd like to address the Ironton City Council, please step forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. Good evening, Council.
All right.
Chairman, Council. My name is Chris Perry. My address is eight four zero North Fifth, or North Sixth Street. And one specific thing that I wanted to address, I'm trying to find a screenshot that I took here, is, and I guess, you know, I'll learn some things as, as I attend these meetings, have a better idea. Is there a specific grants committee? Is there, is there a grants team?
We have, we actually have a grant writer for the city. The C A O and Cindy Anderson are, is the city's official grant writer.
Okay. The only reason I ask, I, in my recent past, I am a grant writer. Currently, I work as star community justice, but I am interviewing for a citywide grant writer position in Huntington. And one specific program that they have is the Love My Block program. I would encourage anybody to take a look at that. It's not a whole bunch of money. It's only twenty-five hundred bucks a year, but it's available every single year. And they have successfully applied to and managed to be awarded that grant every single year for small community improvement projects. Anything from improving public spaces, park projects, turning vacant lots into public gardens, painting graffiti, and other things with colorful murals, even helping senior citizens make some minor repairs to their homes. So this, this project is funded through the AmeriCorps and it's, it's a guaranteed grant. It really doesn't take much. I mean, I looked into it and Ironton could get that with thirty minutes worth of effort every year, so that's.
What is the name of that grant?
It's the Love My Block program. And it is, it's a nationally awarded grant. Huntington, I think, is the only, seems to be the only community in the greater tri-state area that has taken full advantage of it. Every year they've, since twenty, since twenty seventeen, so for four years, somebody sits down, bangs it out on the computer, half hour later, they get twenty-five grand, so just.
Twenty-five grand or twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five grand.
Okay.
Yeah. So, just.
I wrote down twenty-five hundred. So, let's say.
Well, let me, hang on, let me make sure that I'm not, yeah, twenty-five grand.
Okay.
Yep. So, like I said, I know twenty-five thousand doesn't go a long, long way, but it would certainly handle some of the odds and ends things that are going on around town, so.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Others who would like to address the Ironton City Council?
Hi. My name's Mary Lou Wilburne and I live at ten fifteen South Seventh Street. Was born and raised here. I'm hoping to sell my house to get a bigger house in Ironton, but I've got a situation. Between Chestnut and Mulberry and Seventh and Eighth, there's a block, or a lot, a couple lots, I think, on that block where there's poke way taller than I am. We have, there's plumbing pieces, there's some lumber, all kinds of junk, also two cars that have been abandoned. I know the name of the feller that owns the lot, I don't know if you want me to say it out in public or not, but I fight with possums and raccoons in my yard, weekly, like two or three nights a go. And then we've got people squatting in the cars and living in them somewhat. Also, we got a cat problem. They're living in the cars too. But I just, I don't know, I've talked to Terry, she's been great, you know, looking it up on the map and knowing where I'm talking about. They did come through with an in loader this morning and picked up a bunch of stuff that was in the alley. But this lot, it's a problem and my neighbors all put me up to coming here. But I agree, it's a problem, you know?
We actually just recently, two meetings ago, the mayor let us know about a website that is linked through our city website page to report zoning infractions.
Okay.
You, you can report it anonymously, but needless to say, since you're here.
Don't matter.
If you, if you report it under your name and email and contact information, you can actually get updates on, on the progress of that, of that zoning.
I mean, I've got some pictures on my phone, but that's too much to be passing around in here.
And that's something that, that's something that you can, that you can say, I don't know if you can attach photos on there, but you can write it in your description that you have photos of it.
Okay, well, it's under.
It's under the city's webpage.
Okay.
Ironton, Ohio.
And zoning.
Yep.
All right. I thank you, this feller has his hand up. I used to be a teacher, sorry.
So, it was Mary Lou Wilburne?
Uh-huh.
Wilburne, okay. And what, I didn't catch the street, I'll write things down.
My.
Chestnut, Mulberry, and what?
Seventh and Eighth.
Seventh and Eighth, okay.
Mm-hmm. I live at ten fifteen South Seventh, it's behind my house on the, on the street side.
I've dealt with this recently also, so I, you know, I understand completely.
Yeah. Like I say, the fellows coming through this morning were real nice, Terry's been really sweet, so.
Yeah, and, and the city's also, the reason they clean the alley is because we can't go on private property.
I understand that.
And, and also this body, the reason we refer to diszoning is because we can't technically do anything about it other than try to get the law, of course, so.
All righty.
We will, we will report it diszoning and if you do as well.
I will as well. Well, thank you all for listening.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
John? Anything to report? All right. Moving on to communications.
Very simple, I want to ask, oh, I guess, well, since the mayor's not here, I'm looking right at this, you, Terry, oh, there's a guy that called me, he's trying to get a little letter. May I already talk to you, Mr. Scott?
He just called my office and asked for your phone number, so no, I don't, I don't know anything about the letter.
Yeah, all right. Let me take a return and find.
Okay.
I asked John about, he said you'd probably be a better person to get it for me.
Okay.
Or for Hugh, Don, whoever.
Right, okay.
November of two thousand twenty was the agenda and there were, there was a letter on there from, I think Bobby Newman about maybe drug, how it was coming in.
Bobby Newman, no, eighteen hundred block on, I think, on South Seventh Street.
Yeah, anyway, he had a letter on there addressing council mayor, that same meeting. But the other one, one that Hugh's trying to get is a community action organization. It's Depot Square, Phase Two, and he said he's called everybody and nobody could get it for him, I would bring it up to the mayor, but.
What is he wanting from Depot Square? What is it, a letter?
There was a letter on the agenda and he thinks that it was probably part of the minutes.
Okay.
But from the community action, C A O, and references Depot Square, Phase Two, that's what he's trying to get. He didn't care about the Bobby Newman, he just wanted to get that community action letter.
Okay, that's all right, not a problem.
I don't remember that specifically.
It was part of the minutes and he contacted me about that too.
You did?
Yeah, I deferred him to Marta because I couldn't find it in my emails, so, yeah.
So anyway, we can get it there.
No problem.
And if you want email to me or something, I'll take it to him.
Sounds good.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
Any other audience participation? Moving on to communications, there are none. Reports, there are none. Ordinances, if the clerk could please give first reading to ordinance twenty-one fifty-three by title only.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into the attached consulting services agreement with IBI Group Engineering Services, U S A D, and declaring an emergency first reading.
Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to mention here that ordinance twenty-one fifty-three got favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee. I'd also like to make a motion. We suspend the rules and give ordinance twenty-one fifty-three second, so we're reading by title.
Beth?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Chris. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-one fifty-three second and third reading by title only.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into the attached consulting services agreement with IBI Group Engineering Services, U S A D, and declaring an emergency, second reading. Authorizing the mayor to enter into the attached consulting services agreement with IBI Group Engineering Services, U S A D, and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob?
Make a motion. We adopt ordinance twenty-one fifty- Make a motion. We adopt ordinance twenty-one fifty-three.
Beth, second. Any discussion?
Could, just for the sake of the folks who might be watching this on podcast or whatever, could we just explain what this is about?
Feel free, Mike.
As I understand it, it's a replacement of a water line and some street improvements. The money's going to come out of our capital infrastructure fund. The money's already there to do this, to get I B I to work on this. Essentially, water line and street improvement. As I understand it, right now, there's a deadhead part of the water line. This will remove that, making it a loop of free-flowing water instead of a dead area, so.
Specifically in finances mentioned, it's at South Third and Fifth Street Loop. And then the next ordinance is regarding Pine and First Streets, just for clarification. Thanks, Mike.
So this is the one, ten Perry Road, or the, the ten Perry Alley?
Whatever. The twenty-one fifty-three, yes. Roll call.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-one fifty-three is adopted. If the clerk could please give first reading to ordinance twenty-one fifty-four by title only.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into the attached consulting services agreement with I B I Group Engineering Services U S A Inc. and declaring an emergency first reading.
Bob.
Yeah, I'd like to let everyone know that the finance committee gave this, ordinance twenty-one fifty-four, favorable recommendation. And I'd like to go ahead and see if we can suspend the rules and give twenty-one fifty-four second third reading by title only.
Mike. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Chris.
If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-one fifty-four second and third reading by title.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into the attached consulting services agreement with I B I Group Engineering Services U S A Inc. and declaring an emergency second reading. Authorizing the mayor to enter into the attached consulting services agreement with I B I Group Engineering Services U S A Inc. and declaring an emergency third reading.
Bob. I'd like to make, as you adopt ordinance twenty-one fifty-four.
Mike.
Second.
Discussion.
Same thing, just to say what it's about. This is at First Pine Street to make the infrastructure more commercially updated. That is commercially friendly to businesses that may be coming in there.
Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-one fifty-four is adopted. If the clerk could please give second reading to ordinance twenty-one fifty by title only.
Repealing section two twenty point zero three B of the codified ordinances of the city of Ironton, Ohio, declaring an emergency second reading.
Bob.
I'd like to suspend the rules and give twenty-one fifty third reading by title only.
Jake, a second. Thank you. Roll call.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Chris.
If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-one fifty third reading by title only.
Repealing section two twenty point zero three B of the codified ordinances of the city of Ironton, Ohio, declaring an emergency third reading.
Bob.
Make a motion. We adopt ordinance twenty-one fifty.
Mike.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Chris.
Ordinance twenty-one fifty is adopted. Next, we have resolutions. If the clerk could please give reading to ordinance twenty-one fifty-five by title only.
Adopting the alternative tax budget for the city of Ironton, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-two, and submitting the same to the county auditor of Lawrence County, declaring an emergency.
Bob.
Yeah, I'd like to mention this also got favorable recommendations in the finance committee, and I'd like to make a motion that we adopt or pass resolution twenty-one fifty-five.
Second. Mike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Chris.
Resolution twenty-one fifty-five passes. Miscellaneous, Chris?
Do we have any updates on the animal control officer slash?
It's a great question that I'll let the answer to. Terry, do you have any?
I don't know.
No?
Thank you.
We will follow up with the mayor on that again, because Ms. Wilburn also mentioned the janitor. Nate.
I know Kevin said, Kevin Wood said that we were close to getting our updated zoning maps, and he can edit it. Is there any way we could possibly plan another zoning workshop to discuss some of those R one A?
Do you have a tentative date for that, Nate? Again, as soon as you know, let me know, and I'll call.
Okay. Thank you.
I attended a meeting, Zoom meeting, with Kevin with I B I concerning the feasibility study, and if memory serves me, they'll be giving something to council early October for our perusal approval, and then submitting it to the E P A in November concerning their findings of the sewer plant and the system, so.
Okay. I felt that you mentioned, Nate, when you were talking about zoning workshop. Terry, what's the date for our public hearing on the zoning change R one A?
September twenty-third.
September twenty-third at five o'clock. Now, it's the public hearing. Just historically speaking, no one ever comes, but I have to be here, so I'll be here at five o'clock on September twenty-third for that public hearing on zoning regarding R one A. You all don't have to come, but I have to be here. If you want to come for an hour and hear nothing, then feel free, but I'm trying to catch up on emails.
What time is it?
At five o'clock. And I did it at five o'clock just in case we had other business, finance committee meeting, or strategic planning, or B U C or something, and we'll just do that to follow. Okay? So if those are, if those need to arise, we'll do it to follow the public hearing. Nate?
Any updates as far as public hearing for the ordinance to change family from five to three?
That's included in R one A.
Oh.
Right.
No, that's a separate ordinance.
That's separate.
I got favorable recommendation with our, with the commission, planning commission that, if you recall.
So we probably need to schedule that.
That's, that's what we've scheduled, because that's what we had the planning commission for. So.
R one A, I think, aren't going to pass.
R one A did pass, and we don't have to have a public hearing for that.
They should do because you're changing the definition.
So I misspoke, Nate. It's regarding the family definition.
Okay.
Okay.
It's not for twenty-third?
Not R one A.
Okay.
I'd say one A, it's beachfront, after. You guys know you were making other miscellaneous.
Oh, Jacob, I'm sorry.
Okay. Nate?
Kristin, were you able to talk to Beth? Yeah, six, about five o'clock. Yes. Yeah, we're going to have a rec workshop. Rec workshop. Six-thirty at the Collie Center. Collie Center.
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth, yes.
Yeah.
Six-thirtieth Collie Center.
Six-thirty?
Six-thirtieth Collie Center. Yeah, we've got to work around practices and everything else.
If we have nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation with the solicitor and counsel, with no action to follow up.
Do you need John or Nate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bob.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Chris.
Thank you all for your adjournment.